How are we connecting with each other? Planning Commission is, uh... Are they here? Oh, there they are. Very good. Okay, Planning Commission, you ready? Council's ready? We will proceed.
Ready.
We'll call a meeting to order. Special City, uh, Joint City Council Planning Commission Meeting for January 31st, 2023. Please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you. Role call, Council, please.
Yes. Councilmember Abadamas.
Here.
Councilmember Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Role call, Planning Commission, please.
Yes. Councilmember Eric Altman. Or, excuse me, Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Okay. Commissioner Goff is absent this evening. Commissioner Mohammed.
Here.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Here.
Chair Malari.
Here.
Okay. Uh, moving on now, public comment on any item not on the agenda. For Council first.
Is there any public comment? No public comment, Mayor Garcia.
Okay. Planning Commission, anybody showing up on your screens? Any public comment?
Public comment for Planning Commission?
Uh-huh.
There is no public comment, Mayor Garcia.
Do we have these both in the same spot, public comment? Or are they coming in separate areas?
They're both in the same spot, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, we'll move on with our agenda items this evening. Thank you all for joining us. We do have a, uh, very detailed report coming in this evening, and we have two of our solutions at our discretion at the end. Okay, Mr. Cooper.
Hi.
Public, sixth cycle draft public review housing element.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Planning Commission. Uh, I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and pleased tonight to share with you an important milestone with our general plan being the sixth height cycle housing element update. So it's not every day we get to bring you a product that's gone through a lot of review and, and outreach. And so I wanted to just thank a variety of people that have contributed to this. I would start with our consultants, the Rincon Associates, Minty or Harness Team, particularly Nina Bellucci and, and Ryan, who are here tonight virtually to join us. They worked very hard on a very, very data and labor-intensive report, which you can see here is, is, is pretty thick and in perhaps more modern terms consumed many terabytes of data. So gave their lives for this report. Um, I also wanted to thank Nicole Hall. She's been working really hard to coordinate everything. We had meetings and, uh, the, I would come to outreach meetings and everything would be set up and ready to go. She worked really hard. Jen Kenz and Beck also worked really well in getting the word out through our social media and other means of, of reaching out to our community. We had a variety of stakeholder meetings. I wanted to thank citizens that were involved in that and our, um, our social service partners and development community that participated in providing input into the housing element. We also had a variety of people who attended our workshops and answered our surveys. So thank you for answering all of our probing questions in Takalik and Spanish and English. And then finally, I want to thank the Council and the Planning Commission for all of your participation. We've had workshops and we've met with you a number of times and really appreciate that. And then finally, we have, thanks to the city manager and city attorney for your guidance throughout all of this process. So it really, this kind of a, of an effort is just a, a big team effort. All of us taking our part and together as a whole, um, providing further guidance for the city. And then really, that's what this is all about. It's about making wise decisions for the future for our city. So just wanted to take a moment and, and before we kind of get into all the details, just, just sort of appreciate, you know, where we are and what everyone has done up to this point and crafting a plan that's relevant to American Canyon. So I guess I'll just dive right into, you know, what is a housing element. As I mentioned, it's very data-intensive. There's four main components to the housing element. There's an assessment of housing needs. There is fair, fair housing issues. We take a, a very good look at constraints to housing and we scrutinize our development review process intensively to see if there are any obstacles that we could streamline to help facilitate housing. And then there are a variety of locations where we plan for housing to occur in the future. And that's a really important component. Um, I have a, a video. It's, uh, been posted on our website. It's a great resource. It's available in Spanish and English. And I think I might be able to provide some context for everybody to give you a quick overview of, of what a housing element is.
It's time for American Canyon's housing element to be updated. Why should this matter to you? First, it's important to understand what a housing element is. The housing element is part of your city's general plan, developed to address local housing challenges and to find solutions to the housing needs of your community. With your input, these housing needs will be addressed through goals, policies, and programs. Your city's housing element must be updated every eight years and must be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. HCD requires your city to identify suitable housing sites for a diverse range of income levels and a variety of housing types. This can include vacant land, existing buildings that can be redeveloped, and single-family houses that have the potential to build accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Based on demographic data and projected needs, your city must identify enough of these sites to plan for a target number of homes. This is also known as a regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. For this update, American Canyon has been given a RENA allocation of 446 housing units, including 177 for low-income residents. Now that you understand what the housing element is, let's return to the original question. Why should this matter to you? In American Canyon, any individual making under $63,050 is considered low-income. Ensuring there is housing available for low-income residents means ensuring housing is available for vital members of your community, including young adults, older adults on fixed income, and younger families. For example, will your adult children be able to afford to stay in the town they grew up in? Will you be able to raise your family in an affordable home? Will your retiring parents have a safe and comfortable place to live? Addressing housing affordability, access, and equity will all be priorities for assessing your city's housing needs. The housing element update will plan for strategies to ensure all members of the community can have access to a healthy, safe place to live. Furthermore, by law, your updated housing element must address all the requirements to be certified by HCD. And if your plan is not certified, then American Canyon's decision-making authority can be taken away and the state can take control over where housing will be built. It's important that the housing element complies with these requirements in order to maintain local control so that housing policy reflects what the community decides is the best approach for providing enough housing. Your perspective and insight are vital to ensuring that the updated element reflects your housing needs and priorities, which are a key part of creating a plan that upholds your community values. Your community should be an ideal place to live now and for future generations. And the update to the housing element is an opportunity to have these community conversations. How can you get involved? Take a look at the information provided on this slide for more details. And thank you for your participation in these important discussions.
So that's a quick overview of, of sort of the range of what the housing element is looking to accomplish. And I think it's often lost that how important it is to have housing for everybody, including members of our own family that might want to live in American Canyon and, and get priced out and have to go somewhere else. Or folks that maybe already live here and due to life changes need to move. So it's, it's really important, um, just for all of our benefits personally and otherwise, to have housing available for everybody. I guess before we begin talking about what we call the sixth cycle housing element, this is the one that is in front of you. The city is, is at the tail end of an eight-year cycle called the fifth cycle housing element. And, um, you probably recall, we come to you every year with an update to inform the Council and the Planning Commission how well the city is doing at accomplishing the housing element. And William He is tasked with that and does a really good job. It's due in April, so it's akin to the income tax of the housing element. It really gets into a lot of detail. And so if we look at, at the last cycle housing element, we're fortunate in, in that the city achieved its housing element by 147% over what was allocated to the city. So that's pretty impressive. I think also there were 38 implementing policies and they were all so achieved in the, the housing element. There's a review of the fifth cycle housing element in the new housing element, so you can read some more detail about that. I think as we look at the, the housing element, we talk a lot about the regional housing needs allocation. And the video mentioned that we were allocated 446 units. And that's how we were allocated, and I'll kind of review to kind of where we start from. You can see here with the bubbles, the second to the left here, the demographers in Sacramento at, working for HCD calculate how much of the housing need there will be in, in the Bay Area region over an eight-year period. And so then they calculate that number, which was accomplished on June 2020. And then they present that to the Association of Bay Area Governments. And then they go through a very extensive process to allocate this larger share for the region to all the counties and cities individually throughout the Bay Area. So they took about 18 months to do that and accomplished it on January 12th, 2022. Apart from what was allocated to us through this process, the city has two prior, we'll call RENA transfer agreements with Napa County. I'll talk more about that later, but it requires the ABAAG, Association of Bay Area Governments, to confirm the transfer. And so that was accomplished by an email that we received on March 30, 2022. And so the effective change from these two regional transfer agreements is to increase our allocation to 622 units, which is kind of the working number that we all, all have now. So you can see the video was started, we started the housing element ahead of, of getting some of these final numbers from ABAAG. That's why we have that discrepancy in the video, but the number we're working with is 622. Um, I wanted to, to share with you, um, the January 12 date was the date that HCD approved the Bay Area Government's allocation of the RENA throughout the Bay Area. So that's a really an important date. That was just a little more than a year ago. And I think it's really important to note that, you know, HCD, I've highlighted here the letter on the right and then enlarged it on the left. I mean, they're committed to assisting the jurisdictions in the Bay Area to achieve the housing element. Because we're all on the same team. And, um, HCD does provide a lot of information on their website. But if you look at the core of what I would, I would glean from this letter is that HCD is really looking for jurisdictions to provide sufficient land and resources for affordable housing for, and a variety of housing types. And this accomplishes, you know, a number of state goals for housing, environmental, economy, and the like. So I think that's important to remember that they're really looking for making sure that jurisdictions are able to accomplish this regional housing needs allocation. A large part of what's required, and of course, this is really infused in the way American Canyon does business, is through community outreach. And so Nicole worked really hard with Jen, Kenz, and Beck on our website. And, uh, we have a lot of information on there, and so that's up and going. We have also, uh, we had two virtual workshops because of, of code restrictions, but we had the workshops. We had online surveys. Like mentioned before, we have stakeholder interviews with housing developers and service providers. So we really did as best as we could to reach as broad a spectrum of stakeholders as we could. In addition, primarily, there was Nicole, William He, and myself. We went out to a number of festivals and events in American Canyon. It is a lot of fun to get out there. You know, we really enjoy going to meet me in the streets. Uh, we were there for two times. We also attended the Juneteenth celebration. Uh, we were there for the Pride celebration. Uh, we met some of our favorite people at the Citizens Activity Center. We met high school students and, and did a Citizens Academy with a housing element focus on there. And then we attended the middle school open house. That's pictured there on the lower right and, and upper right. And there's William talking as well to a, it's, it's a sold-out crowd. It was really well-attended. So, um, you know, we really did get out there and meet people, which we enjoy doing anyway, but it's, um, great to get out there and, and, and have our surveys. Um, I'd mentioned, you know, the data-intensive aspect for the housing element. There is a very involved housing needs assessment that's stipulated by state law. The outcome of that is, is news that certainly the Planning Commission and Council and probably those in the audience might be familiar with, that we have an aging population. We're a minority-majority community. American Canyon is more diverse than the rest of Napa County. We're an exporter of workers. More people commute outside the city for their jobs. So they have long commutes. Overpayment, people pay a disproportionately high amount of their salary for rent and mortgages. So housing affordability is an issue. And, um, this may be also a symptom of the fact that most of the housing in American Canyon are single-family residents, which tend to be more expensive than other forms of housing. One of the new features in the housing element is a term called affirmatively furthering fair housing. So those of you that are probably involved in housing elements in the past might be familiar with fair housing. American Canyon has been a, a very long participant with Napa County Fair Housing. We're certainly in, uh, involved in that. But the housing element itself requires meaningful actions on the part of cities and counties to combat systemic racism in housing. And this is really all in aid of the federal housing laws that for years, for various reasons, haven't been followed. So the housing elements today really need to be looking at, at policies to combat that. The findings for, um, there's a whole separate analysis of fair housing in American Canyon. Comparative, uh, American Canyon does score comparatively well compared to other jurisdictions in the state. There's a lot of information here that, that you're also probably familiar with. The one that did stick with me that was new information is that 11% of our residents live with one or more disabilities, particularly walking. And so that really speaks to the need to, uh, work hard on completing the gaps in our sidewalk and ped and bicycle system to give everybody more of an opportunity to be able to get around without an automobile. And so that was, is really the first time that our housing element is speaking to this issue, among others, including, um, there's linguistic isolation in American Canyon. I mentioned overpayment. That certainly is one that disproportionately affects minorities. And so there is a need for affordable housing. Overpayment for housing is, is a cause for that. Supportive and transitional housing. These were some of the input that we got from stakeholders, particularly the ones that are service providers. And then, of course, limited options for non-vehicle transportation. Um, the housing element does include some new programs beyond what was in the fifth cycle. Some of them are listed here, and, uh, so we'll be working hard on them once the housing element is adopted. So Doc kind of want to talk a little bit about the regional housing needs allocation. There's kind of a textbook, it's a flow chart, so to speak, on how a city approaches accomplishing its regional housing need. The first step would you, would take a look at what projects are already under construction and in development review. And then after you look at that, then you could look at how much of the accessory dwelling units you can expect to have built in your city in the next eight years. HCD requires that you look back the past five years and, and make an average of that. And so they're looking at past performance being an indicator of future because they do count as lower income because they tend to be affordable by design. Other sites that you might look at if you still haven't met your housing needs allocation is you might look at undeveloped sites that have zoning for housing. And then finally, if that isn't sufficient, then you need to look at sites within your city that would be rezoned within a two-year period. This would be a situation that can be very controversial in many cities because there, you have to identify sites. So imagine somebody owns a property and the ci, the city decides that they need to rezone it to something else. So that can be very controversial. Fortunately, in American Canyon, we're able to satisfy our regional housing needs with projects that are already approved and under construction in some cases. And if you look at that and, and think about things, um, you look at, I have three large projects here on the screen. The left one here is highlighting Watson Ranch. I mean, if we had started to think about how to satisfy our regional housing need in a year ago, we'd be in a heap of trouble. The, the Watson Ranch project was conceived largely around 2006. It was approved by the City Council in 2018. So there's extensive processes to, to look at these projects and to make sure that they are right for American Canyon and that they're thoughtfully designed. And, and that is when they are approved. And then they have a long-term build-out. So the work that was done all the way back from 2006, we're really reaping the benefits of it now. And then the work that's happening today has very long-term consequences that will benefit future councils and residents. The second project in the middle is the Broadway District Specific Plan. That was approved by the City Council in 2019. It was originally conceived around 2010 as part of a plan put forward by the Association of Bay Area Governments on, uh, encouraging cities to promote smart growth in the central part of cities where there's transit, jobs, and access to housing and, uh, pedestrian and bicycle, um, availability. So we have our Broadway Plan, which itself, much like the, the Watson Ranch, had tremendous citizen input into the way it looks and feels and is developed. On the right hand is, is a newer project, the Oath Hill Apartments. I know the property owner was considering that one for development for many, many years and then came to the Council as, to get your support for a housing project. And with that, they went through a full process and, um, that one includes 291 homes. So by doing things ahead of time, thoughtfully, methodically, the city is, is complying with the housing element and fulfilling it as well as building a better city. For purposes of fulfilling the HCD's inquiry on, okay, among these projects, which ones are you using for your inventory? I have them listed here, some of the larger ones. We have the Residences at Napa Junction, which is in the upper right here, um, behind Dunkin' Donuts. That one's under development review. I mentioned, just mentioned Oath Hill. That one's 291. It's under construction today with the grading and we're reviewing the building permits. Napa Cove is another one that's under construction. Canyon Estates, that one is also under construction. And then we have a variety of projects in Watson Ranch, both market rate and affordable. For those that, that are, have perhaps an accounting bent, on the Council and Planning Commission, I have like the backup table here. The top line here, um, which on the right-hand side is 446, is where we started from, you know, a year ago with our allocation from the Association of Bay Area Governments. I'd mentioned that there are two, um, RENA transfer agreements with the county. The first one listed there was approved by the Council in 2010. And this agreement is one where the city obtained the county's agreement to annex land into the city that enabled Watson Ranch to have the property it needs for the plan that was approved in 2018. And so that, the county, um, required the city to absorb a portion of its regional housing need in return for support for the city annexing land for housing. So if you think about that for a minute, the city accepted more housing to facilitate housing projects. So I mean, it really does speak to the, to the way in which the City Council is supportive of housing and is in fact willing to step up, uh, its obligation in order to make housing possible. The second one, which is in the same camp, in a sense, was in 2017, approved by the Council. This was the Valley View Project. The county contributed $2 million to help fund completion of the project. And in return for that, um, the city agreed to accept a portion of its regional housing need. So we had these two agreements that were reached. That bumped our, our total regional housing needs allocation to 622, kind of in the middle there. The housing inventory that was on that graphic I just showed you equates to just more than 1,500 units. And so we have what called a buffer, units allocated above and beyond what is our requirement from HCD. That having a buffer is itself a requirement because HCD has learned over the years that locations the cities identify for housing doesn't always come true. So in order to have a backup plan, it's kind of like your Plan B, we have a buffer, which is quite generous in terms of our ability to be able to meet our obligation, which kind of gets us to the, to the 934 buffer. So that's kind of how that all breaks down and where it fits within what HCD is going to be looking at when they are reviewing our housing element. I wanted to also share with, with everybody who's in the meeting that not only has the city been working on the housing plan, but we've also been, in a sense, implementing it with housing. So there are many, many things that are ongoing since January, when the allocation was made, in the way of housing in American Canyon. A first one is the city actively solicits and is successful in getting grants for first-time homebuyer programs for lower-income residents and also a lower-income loan program for home improvements. And, uh, we are blessed with the city of Napa and their very capable team who, who administer this program on behalf of the city. And, um, they have been reaching out to residents in American Canyon in certain neighborhoods to inform people that we have this money available. And they also have a social media and they're talking to lenders. And they really do a lot of great work to facilitate being able to make housing affordable to, to lower-income residents. And they really do a lot of great work to facilitate being able to make housing affordable to lower-income residents. Also, the city is an active member in the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. This is a godsend nonprofit that has a wealth of information for anybody that has any interest in a building or an accessory dwelling unit. They're just incredible to be able to have people devoted to be provide information for free on this. It's a difficult topic, becoming a landlord and building your house. It's it's a lot of work, and they do a wonderful job for that. And so that's a resource that we have. Also, you have city staff, who is on the steering committee for the Napa-Sonoma Housing Collaborative. This is a group that's been funded by the Associated Bay Area Governments to help facilitate housing element development within the Bay Area and specifically in the Napa-Sonoma region. Our planning commission, much like our council, are high achievers and do a lot of work at informing themselves about the rules and how to all of the issues related to planning and housing. And so we have planning commissioners that have registered to attend the League of Cities Planning Commission Institute in March. So as decisions come to the planning commission, people can take heart in knowing that this is a group that's well-informed and educated and volunteers their time to learn. Apart from all of that, we have a lot of processing of new housing. We processed nine accessory dwelling unit permits since January. Of course, we have our Lemos Point Affordable Housing Project under construction in Watson Ranch. That's 186 units. That counts towards our sixth-cycle housing element allocation. The same is true for Napa Cove, also under construction here on Broadway, that's 66 units. The city is supportive of measures to help foster affordable housing as well through supporting Section 8 vouchers, in this case for Napa Cove, but was also true for Valley View. The city has issued 90 building permits for single-family homes in Watson Ranch. We're plan-checking building permits for 219 multifamily homes in Watson Ranch. The city extended the life of a four-lot subdivision. It could have expired, requires the city council to specifically extend it, which occurred this spring. And then also, we're processing development applications for a 216-unit single-family subdivision on the Newell Families' property in Watson Ranch. We also separately have a 25-lot, single-family subdivision in Watson Ranch. And then I'd mentioned 453-unit apartment community. So while the city is working on planning for housing, we're implementing as we're planning because things are already lined up and we're ready to go. So I know I talked a while, and I'm almost done. And I wanted to leave you with some key messages. And that would be that the city has more than satisfied its obligations under the last eight years under the fifth cycle. So the city has a very well-documented history of pro-housing actions. The city leadership over the past 15-plus years, obviously longer, but for purposes of the sixth cycle, let's go back only 15 years, that work is really paying benefits with being able to, as we'd mentioned in that video, let's have a plan that your public supports. Well, the housing that comprises the sixth cycle comes from plans that have gone through a transparent public process and public outreach. So these are projects that have public support. The city actively seeks public input on all issues, including the housing element and all of those projects that I just listed previously. The city facilitates housing with financial and regulatory incentives. I haven't covered them all, but you can read about it in the housing element. The city has a record of agreeing to a higher obligation under the regional housing needs assessment as a means to build housing. I think that's really important and one that you might find rare in California. The city council continues to work hard on facilitating, and with planning commission as well, housing applications and programs during the housing element preparation. And the draft element includes programs that we're ready and willing to begin working on. And so we recognize that there's a certification process, and we welcome that. But there are components to the housing element that we know are required. And so they're in the plan, and we're ready to get whirling on it. So American Canyon is not a place that sits on its hands. It's a place that when it wants something to get done, we work together, and we build a plan, and then we go forward. Kind of next steps, we have submitted the housing element to the state in November. Of course, we have tonight, hopefully, perhaps this is a public hearing, planning commission and city council adoption. And then we're looking forward to comments from HCD, and we will diligently respond to those. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for the presentation. It's great to see what American Canyon is achieving out there, and it's just, it's quality work as well. I'm very sure that's a very important thing to a lot of people. Just for council's information and planning commissioners, I serve on the ABAG Executive Board. So we're the ones who ultimately decide distribution of the housing allocations. It's a lot of back and forth. ABAG represents 101 cities in all nine counties in San Francisco Bay Area. We are fortunate in that we have the space to build houses. Some communities, they're, without knowing anything further than what they report out, they're built out in the South Bay. So I don't know, they're more challenged in terms of their ability to meet these requirements from the state. It's fortunate for us that we are, and I'm just really impressed. I had the opportunity last week, sit in on the planning commission meeting on the Watson Ranch as a private citizen, not as an elected official, just to make that clear, and was very impressed with what Mr. McGrath is proposing for Watson Ranch. It's very, very innovative and feels very much on the leading edge of all the environmental concerns that people have, that we should all have. I just have some more questions on that, but I think I'll let the council members comment first. Anybody else on council? If not, planning commission? Oh, see a light go on? Planning commission? Okay, mine is some more on affordability. We had one there, you had some like what were qualifications for very low, low income, et cetera. And just doing my usual math that I have done with other groups. See, we have very low income, that's annual income is $56,850 a year. Well, that breaks down to about $28 an hour. And hospitality workers, a lot of them make less than that. See, the low income is $90,050 annual income. I thought that would be pretty well off, frankly. But however they arrived at that criteria, that is $45 an hour. With the moderate, you had $31,050 a year income, that works out about 65 an hour. So with my industry in healthcare, you see with the state service in our end, registered nurse in a, say, a supervisory position, was probably making around $45 an hour, maybe a little bit more. So they're in the low-income category. See rent, see you're supposed to spend a third of your month, your annual, your monthly income on rent, right? No more than that. So a very low income can afford at $28 an hour, can afford a rent at $1,579 a month. I don't know anything that rents at that low price. Low income can afford a rent of $2,500 a month, roughly. That might be a thing of the past, I haven't checked in a while. In moderate can afford $3,640 a month. That seems to be more in the ballpark of what I think people are, I'm hearing people pay. So that was one thing I think to consider with that. Don't know how much of this, these are households are dual income. You pointed out one, the median is on another page here, $101,792. Is that single income or dual income houses? We don't know what that is. Too often I find my connection to the real estate industry, my wife's a realtor. A lot of families have a dual income, that's what makes them be able to qualify for the mortgage. By the way, the mortgage and the rent are the same in terms of my calculations here. So that was just something I'd like to point out with the conversation in terms of what we're trying to meet, and very low income would be a real concern. You probably have two working families, just two households working, or multiple families sometimes in households, I don't know how much we look at that.
That's right, and thank you, Mayor. We did refine in research that there are many households in American Canyon who do spend a disproportionately high amount to afford their home. Not everyone can, you know, find available a median-priced place. It's all depends on your on your living circumstances and what you can find and and life challenges and a host of issues. But definitely, housing affordability is a large issue for many people in American Canyon.
Well, I think one of the ABAG reports pointed out that there are, in this lower-income area, there's more, folks are spending up to 50%, sometimes two-thirds of their income just to pay the rent. And they're really struggling, so. What it points out to us is we're doing a very good job if we can find ways to assist people with that, and there's a lot of opportunities out there. We got a light here, and I don't know which one that is. Is that, okay, but your sticker is gone, so we'll have to get a new one. Thank you, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, well, first of all, thank you for the report. And, excuse me, I want to really emphasize that looking at the prior cycle, the fifth cycle, we didn't, we not only exceeded our legal obligations, we ironically did a better job at the low and very low range than at the above-moderate range. In fact, it almost looks like we failed to sell really expensive homes. So we're going to have to step up our efforts in that regard. But so I think it's impressive that we exceeded, significantly exceeded our legal requirements in the last cycle. And based on projects that are in the pipeline, we are, we can reasonably expect to exceed our obligations in the next cycle and then some. So I think it really needs to be emphasized that regardless of any technicalities, in terms of substance, we are meeting everything that the Housing and Community Development Department expects the cities. And I think, I recall someone saying, out of all the jurisdictions in the state, there's only six communities that did better or did as well as we did. So we're kind of like in the 90 percentile of good housing stock communities. Is that a fair assessment?
It is, it is, Councilmember Joseph. And with the fifth cycle, I mean, that was during a period of economic hardship. And so that explains why the above-moderate is was very low. What did help, though, is the very active and continual work on part of the city council and planning commission and our folks with the Napa Housing Authority to help facilitate the Valley View Project. That came back for, they got a CDBG grant, they got a county grant, they got affordable housing nexus fees from the city, the city donated the land. I mean, there's, the list goes on and on and on to enable that project to go forward. So that was a large part of it. A second project was the Village of Vintage Ranch. This was a project that was within hours of expiring, and the city council extended the term on behalf of the applicant at their request, which then enabled the project to get built. And in return for that extension, the city council required that the affordable component remain affordable for twice as long as it was approved for back in 2006. So that was an affirmative action on part of the city council to make that project happen. The other project that contributed a lot to the fifth-cycle housing element is Canyon Ridge. That project required a zone change in order to provide the density they needed to build the project. So in every case, for the majority of the housing that comprises the fifth-cycle housing element, success lies solely on the part of the council and the planning commission to recognize the importance of these projects and to approve discretionary actions that you had no legal obligation to do, apart from meeting the housing element, one could say.
So I think it's fair to say we can pat ourselves on the back a little bit.
Right, and that was a time when the private sector wasn't building a lot.
Right. Now, with that in mind, I want to shift to go from the big picture to drill down to Goal H2 Balance of Housing Types. And under Goal H2.1 Diversity of Housing Types, it lists a variety, including townhomes and accessory dwelling units. And I don't want to steal Commissioner Altman's thunder on townhomes, but those are two housing stocks that I think are really important, not only because in the case of townhomes, they're entry-level, but as Commissioner Altman will tell me, they're also empty nester, the other end of the cycle. And so, and accessory dwelling units are really cool, too. Basically, what I'd like you to do is talk to us about some of the programs and projects that we envision to try to make townhomes and accessory dwelling units a bigger piece of the sixth-cycle pie.
I'll start with accessory dwelling units. The access, the, I'll start with the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. So they they start, got their start with with funding that will expire in the next foreseeable future. And so they will be coming to each member jurisdiction to ask for a nominal contribution to keep the lights on. So that would be something, and they're continually improving their services and augmenting it. They're they're great, so that's that's one area. A second area is the state modified the accessory dwelling unit law in the fall. And so on the top of our list of new programs with the housing element is to update the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I've been in communication with HCD, informing them that we are going to be doing this. It's part of our housing element, we are aware it needs to be updated, it's a high priority, and they've offered to assist. So that would be a second one. I believe in the new state laws, there are state-mandated concessions that it would provide that isn't available under our current law. So that might help foster additional ADUs. Thirdly, the city has recently had a little windfall of funds through a new state taxing that provides funds that will be used towards helping to provide forgivable loans for homeowners who wish to build ADUs on their property. And so that's a new funding source. Our partner with Napa, City of Napa, is spearheading that. We came to the council a month or two ago about that, and so that should be ramping up soon.
In that regard, are we essentially requiring in exchange for those forgivable loans that the owner agrees to have below rate or low and very low income?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
So we have a number of things on the horizon. I think also, too, we're, just more people are learning more. Maybe it's, you know, our friends at the ADU Center that are helping, but we're getting more applications. So as I think people begin to sort of get their feet wet and understand what's going on, and maybe even the, you know, the incentives that are in our current ordinance have been helpful. So I think the tide is definitely in favor for seeing more ADUs in our city. And your second question about townhomes, that is one that I will look into in terms of an ordinance. Of course, you may be happy to know that last Thursday, the planning commission approved 30 townhomes as part of the Watson Ranch Hotel Project.
They might not be considered affordable housing, right?
They probably won't be, but they are nonetheless townhomes. So, I mean, we've got to start somewhere.
And I understand, having talked to developers for years, that there's that 10-year warranty thing with townhomes, and that scares them all off. and that scares them all off. And I guess I'm getting to the point where I think we're doing a, a good enough job providing housing that I think we as a city need to start taking the attitude that we expect developers to provide townhouses. And if they're worried about the warranty and exposures and all that, we should work with them. But at, at the end of the day, I think we're getting to the point where we need to just say, look, you have to provide that. And, you know, if you don't want to provide it, then maybe you find another town to, you know, that has our record.
So yeah, we can definitely look into, into what might be ways in which to encourage or regulate additional.
Because I do think that's, that's kind of the one missing housing stock that, that is going to cost us in the long run if we don't pursue more aggressively. It might be nice to start with at least some kind of an informational workshop that drills down into that ten-year warranty and what does it mean and why? And what can we do to get around it and so forth? Because I, I think homeownership is almost always better than renting because you create wealth, and that's kind of the name of the game, especially if we're concerned about social justice. So we've got to insist on providing those opportunities for wealth generation for our residents, not necessarily the guy building the product. So that's my soapbox on townhouses. Otherwise, it's a great report, we're, we've done great, looks like we're going to continue to do great. I can't imagine Housing and Community Development having a problem with what we're, we're looking to consider tonight. I would be surprised if anyone else would object if they drilled down and looked at the details and not just some technicality. Thank you.
I think on the matter of townhouses, condominiums, I think might be worthwhile checking with other cities in the Bay Area. Some of them may have had some successes with it, or what are the typical challenges they face with it in terms of litigation? That might help us put together a better plan in terms of being, being able to address that issue. I just always find, particularly with, like I say, for example, the League of California Cities or A-Bag or MTC, you have that opportunity to network and find out. I take, you usually get some good take home. Thank you. On that, we have Vice Mayor Washington.
Yeah, Brett, great job on a presentation. I'm sure you educated a lot of people, especially me, on what you just provided, so thank you. One clarifying question though, when, when Councilman Joseph, you said that there's a ten-year hold on townhouses. I, I knew they were for condominiums, but that applies to townhomes as well?
I may be using the, the terms interchangeably, so.
So for example, the Village of Vintage Ranch was approved with a condominium map. And that property owner said it's their business plan to rent indefinitely, but they liked having the option of selling them as condominiums as a plan B because it's so hard to predict economic conditions. Sometimes they favor ownership, sometimes they favor rental, so it's, it gives them the flexibility. But they did mention, you know, there is a minimum, there is a ten-year construction defect warranty that occurs with condominiums. And what builders have found is on the probably ninth year, ninth month, they drop a lawsuit before the eve of the ten-year with everything, you know, that might be wrong. And so that's a practice that's, that has cooled willingness of developers to sell projects as condominiums from the outset.
But, and also in addition to that, I believe what you guys are referring to is SB eight hundred. And that's not just for condominiums and townhouses, that's for single family as well. And it's, it's a ten-year statute of limitations for latent defects is basically what it is. So there's a, a really detailed procedure in the Civil Code that outlines what you need to do in order to be able to sue. So once the ten years are up, then if you find a latent defect, it's not on the home builder anymore. So it's not just condos and townhouses, it's housing in general.
Yeah, and Mr. Washington, I'm sure you got many when you bought your house in Vintage Ranch, so this is where all those law firms are sending you defects, even though you don't necessarily have a defect. So they do work for single family homes too. You'll, you'll get solicited by law firm after law firm, wanting you to sue the builder of the home for whatever reason. Gotcha, gotcha. Oh, and, and also like Mark mentioned, I know Planning Commissioner Altman mentioned those townhouses. And me having so many children, I like to have my kids move back to American Canyon. And they want to come back, and those townhouses will definitely serve that purpose for me. I do, I do want to hear public comment and hear what people have to say about it. But I also want to talk about the wins. There are a lot of wins in which you mentioned today in your presentation. One being the collaboration with the county. I often hear how the county and the city of American Canyon, we don't get along. But, I mean, there's options there, I mean, there's an opportunity there that shows that we, with Valley View, we work together collaboratively, which is a win. I think a lot of this presentation that you have, I spoke with Mr. Holly earlier today. And, you know, we talk about, you know, we need to highlight these wins. And this to me is definitely wins. You know, you know I know about wins with the Philadelphia Eagles this weekend, so I know about wins. I know a little bit about wins.
Just rubbing it in, yeah.
But, but I also want to say as a win, that we have past planning commissioners that are, that has to get credited for what we're, we're obtaining the fruits of their hard work and it's council members from the past, fruits of their hard works. And it just encourages me to know that I need to make wise decisions for, like you mentioned earlier, for those council members and those planning commissioners of the future. So, thank you for the presentation. Like I said, I like to hear what some of our community members have to say about this too. But all in all, I, I think it's a great win for this city. Thank you Jason, thank you Brett for what you guys do and the team.
I see Commissioner Altman's hand up, but we'll take the council comments first and then we'll move on to Planning Commission. Councilmember Abadamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Brett for the presentation. I, I agree with Councilmember Joseph and Vice Mayor Washington, you, you and the team have been doing an amazing job. I just have, I'm out of curiosity, you said that through this process we'll also be updating the ADU ordinance? Will we also be updating our short-term, like Airbnb ordinance? Because although we don't necessarily think of Airbnb as affordable housing, it technically is, especially if we, if our ordinance is crafted in a way that limits it to stays of thirty days or more, right? So I'm just curious if that's going to be a part of the update as well.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Abadamas. The, currently, the city doesn't have an Airbnb ordinance per se. Home stays for, for short-term rentals, less than thirty days, in most areas of the city is prohibited. And so as people may build small units in their homes, then they would rent them for thirty days or more. So there definitely is a consideration of, of what effect permitting Airbnbs might have on available smaller ADU-style units.
It's an interesting conversation, right? So it's not allowed in a lot, in most places, but my understanding is that we do allow it in some places in the city?
Yes.
And then in others, it's happening with our consent or without it? It's still happening. So it's an interesting dialogue, but I, I see Airbnb or short-term vacation rentals or these, you know, short-term stays as definitely part of adding to the affordable housing stock? Simply for the, the reasons, you know, like if somebody wants to rent a place and can't commit to a one-year lease, well, they have the Airbnb option where they can stay for month to month, right? That's just an example, but I can even tell you personally, like my husband and I, when we were in escrow, we were married, but we were in escrow, so we stayed at an Airbnb for a month while our escrow was closing. So it, it kind of helped us already start our life before moving into our home, right? So although Airbnb and, you know, short-term vacation rentals or whatever you want to call it isn't traditionally viewed as affordable housing, I definitely think that there's an argument to be had that it should be included in the affordable housing discussion. And I think this is an opportunity for us to come up with an ordinance that, you know, clearly defines how we want that to look like, whether we want to allow short-term or if we want to limit it to stays of thirty days or more and add to the affordable housing stock.
Thank you. I know that we've got Planning Commissioners also wanted to comment, but you want to comment? Councilmember Joseph?
Two quick things. Number one, just, I would reaffirm Councilmember Abadamas's comments, I'd like us to talk about Airbnbs. And then secondly, just another comment, as I mentioned to our city attorney this, this afternoon, I was, I'm part of the Napa County Community Benefits Coalition. And they've been really focusing on housing elements and looking at Napa County's housing project, you know, or Napa Valley, as in all the jurisdictions. That they were very impressed at the cooperative relationship that we had and all the cities and towns have in Napa County. And they went so far as to say they'd like to write a letter to HCD pointing out how it's been very cooperative, that we're all engaging in smart growth and basically a attaboy letter. And so in the context of we seem to be working well together on housing, I just bring this up to reinforce that idea that it's even being noticed by stakeholders who have not always been staunch advocates of everything we're doing. So it's just an indication of how well we're doing in, in this area. But, so I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. We ready for Planning Commissioners now? Commissioner Altman?
Thank you. Just a couple of things on my mind. One, yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Joseph for the shout-out as it were. Condominiums, whether they be in the form of townhouse or some other structure because they can be done in numerous, including, believe it or not, small, single-family homes. You can do as a condominium setup. But I think that is and has been, and, and as you guys know, has been something that I have been pushing for, for a long time on all of our developers coming to town when it comes to planning commission. And will continue to do so because I think it is a very critical piece of the housing stock that we are lacking. And I teased Terry McGrath a little bit about the hotel townhomes and, and, you know, are, are they the condominiums where he's going to give us? And I'm hoping he'll do more as, as Watson Ranch continues to advance. But I agree with the, various council members' comments that yes, that is a, an area we need to continue to pursue. I had one question for Brent and, and, you know, we got to see this presentation before, so I think I've already thanked him for a wonderful job, but I will do so again. But my question is, the two RENA transfer agreements, when do they, I don't know what the right term is, but when do they go away? What's the expiration? Is it, is it just a total number of units that we need to meet? And if they're met in, you know, this coming cycle six, are, is the commitment then done? Or is it an ongoing commitment that'll carry on to cycle seven, cycle eight, and so on? I'm not familiar on that, so I'd love to get some better understanding of how that works. Because I do think, you know, we've taken a look back and council members have commented, particularly Councilmember Washington about going back to, and Councilmember Joseph about going back to cycle five and the successes there. But I think we also, you know, we're, we're about to enter cycle six, but I think we need to keep an eye out on cycle seven and down the road because we're, we're having successes today as has been acknowledged by work done in the past. And so I think it's important that we keep an eye to the future and sort of have a sense as to where we're going and what we might be able to do. So that's kind of my comments at this point.
That's a great question, Commissioner Altman. Question being, the, the two RENA transfer agreements with the county, are there subsequent cycles that might be affected by prior agreements? The answer to that is that this cycle is the conclusion of both of those agreements. The, the one for Watson Ranch covered the fifth cycle and the sixth cycle. So that's a good question because it may affect more than one. But in this case, both of these agreements will be concluded with this cycle of the housing element.
Are you got any, any other questions? That's something to point out in terms of housing models. Lenar on Mayor Island, some of us had an opportunity, this was a few years back, take a tour of it. It's very south end, and I think the term might be junior ADU, it's part of the house. So you have the larger house, it's three, four bedrooms, you know, quite a bit of space. And then built into it, kind of off the, I think it comes off the living room portion of it, there's a junior ADU. It's a one-bedroom, has its own kitchen and laundry area. And is accessible from a patio door that goes out on the, on the porch. And there was a number of those models there, and I thought, well, that's creative. See, when you're a young family and you got the kids, you're in the big house and you rent out the small house, the ADU. And when you're an empty nester, you move into the ADU and you rent out the big house. So I thought, that's pretty clever type of market. Then maybe there's something to pass on to developers for that. Be interesting to see what success rate they've had with that project. Cool. Any other questions? Councilmember Oral?
Yeah, before, before I begin, I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission has no further questions. I didn't want to go out of order. Okay, I think we've checked. Great. So the housing element, it's all about building and finding new places for new housing and construction?
Largely new housing, that's true. There are also policies that encourage extension of affordable housing that might expire. Today, affordable housing is required to be deed restricted for fifty-five years, but earlier projects didn't have terms that long. And so the lodge apartments is in one example that had affordable housing and it expired and the property owner chose not to accept any offers to extend the term of affordability. But, but the housing element does encourage those kinds of conversations with property owners when they have units that were deed restricted for a certain period of time and that period of time is, is due to expire.
Okay. So that, an extension is one example. Any other examples?
It's, it's possible that, not so much in American Canyon where most of the housing is new, but in older communities that might have market rate, older housing to be purchased and then turned over to, to affordable housing because it's costs less to buy something that's, isn't brand new. So, but there's not a lot of opportunity for that in American Canyon, but it, there may be something.
So it could be, let's say, a dilapidated property that the city turns around and makes into housing?
Correct.
Right? I'm asking this because I appreciate the suggestion of the Airbnb discussion and short-term rentals, but I'm not sure we would get credit for that if that were to happen. Would it, would RENA, would that count as RENA allocation? Yeah.
Maybe the city attorney would like to answer that.
I think that would be a discussion that would be ongoing with HCD because the tendency is to look at each jurisdiction on its own. And you're right about other policies that are required in the housing element. In other jurisdictions, there is going to be the implementation. Like Brent's presentation is, in the last cycle, we had thirty-eight implementation prob, programs that were accomplished is to maintain the existing housing stock is the large company under one, the large category under which that becomes viable. The issue with Airbnb is term. So it depends on the term that's involved, and that's all to be determined. So could it count? The answer would be yes, but that's something to be looking at and working with HCD depending on what our local ordinance says. Since we don't have that category now, that's not something we could look to, to count to in this cycle.
Yeah, and again, so I appreciate the short-term rental, bringing up that subject. But for the purposes of this evening, we're on the sixth housing element, cycle element update, right? And so that's what we're being asked to adopt to tonight. There's no way we're going to get through a substantive community conversation on short-term rentals, which I think should probably include a lot of public input. I see the value in them and I also see the negatives in them too, particularly from neighbors in some spaces. And then we've heard more complaints in town than that, and I'd rather have a robust discussion of that. But in terms of this, us getting credit for a housing element plan tonight, that's what we're being asked to do, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear, my intent- Yeah, just to be clear, my intent was, Airbnb isn't going to be a discussion tonight. It's afterwards, we need to have a workshop, because frankly, I kind of see Airbnbs as potentially part of the problem, not part of any solution. But I think it is a separate topic at another time. So just to be clear, I don't, I don't think, you're right.
Yeah, no, and I wanted clarity on that, too, as well, right? And so, you know, I think we have a plan here for this, and I think it's, it's a worthy discussion, that's going to go a lot deeper than that. And you just brought up some, another point to me, is, in some markets, they're, those houses are taken off, taken off the market, because of rentals, and, and it raises the prices in.
Yeah, I.
So I just wanted to clarify as well. I wasn't suggesting that we go with Airbnb to increase our RENA, but exactly the issues you're bringing up, is why we should take the opportunity to draft a clear ordinance, and set what we want our policies to be, rather than continue having illegal vacation rentals being rented, to absolutely no benefit and no say of the city.
Fair enough. Might I suggest we take that up another evening? Because I, I think that's something that you bring up on a point issue, that, that needs to be looked into. So I think it's an agenda for, for a future meeting.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, that we maybe just have Mr. Holly agendize that for another time.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Altman, your hands up.
Yes, thank you. I, I wanted to add one other comment regarding the conversion of, or development of condominiums. And, and I don't know if this is doable, and I'm curious if the city attorney has any comments, or if anybody else has any comments. But because of the construction defect laws, and, and the 10-year window, is it possible for the city to, when working with a property, to kind of say, "Look, we get it. We want you to build apartments, rent them for 10 years, or 11 years, give them a little bit of grace, and then convert them." So build them to condominium standards, rent them initially, and then in, in a decade, or 10, 12, whatever years, do a conversion, when the renters move out, not forcing renters out, but when the renters move out, we'd like you to, you know, make it a condominium, a for-sale project. So any, you know, it's an idea, I don't know if it works or not, but any comments or, or whatnot on that would be appreciated.
Through the chair, I can certainly look into that. I would note respectfully, that there was an extensive amount of litigation on that issue, that resulted in case law, I believe in the early 80s, commencing in West Hollywood. The regulation in this area, you know, presently would have to be permissive, because it would be a choice of the owner. But I think that's for subsequent analysis and review, and I'm glad to bring that back to both the commission and the council.
Yeah. Planning Commissioners and council, are you ready for public comment? Okay, public comment is open on this. Anybody attending wish to co-comment?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment? Raise your hand, please. It appears we have no public comment on Zoom.
We have no public comment. Okay, well, if our discussion is completed, we do have a couple of resolutions to complete by the end of our work today. If there is more comment, I'm coming back to council now. Public comment is closed. I, I'm satisfied with it.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, we received an email from Barry Christian, saying he tried to make a public comment, but the link wasn't working. City Manager Holly confirmed that the link wasn't working, so I don't know if you want to reach out to Barry as well.
Doing that right now.
Okay.
Very good, we'll hear from him.
He did submit a written comment, as a part of his email.
Yeah.
Which I just got a phone call as well, I'm reaching out to him. I also wanted to draw the council's attention to a letter we received from, I know Bill, you want to talk about this letter?
We received the communication at 418 this afternoon, from Californians for Homeownership, YMB Law, and Cal HDF. I placed them all in the record. It's a companion letter to one that was received back in December. It raises issues with respect to the procedural processing of the housing element, and was originally dealt with, with a response by Mr. Holly, inviting the representatives to come to the city to investigate the city's practices with respect to the fifth-cycle housing element, and its compliance with generation of the required number of RENA The combined entity refused, on the basis that they were involved in too much litigation, and because of holidays. There was a follow-up communication on January 20th, referencing this hearing, indicating that the proceed forward would not be in compliance with state law, because review of the draft element had not been obtained from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And then there was a further follow-up communication, as described, dated today, at the time that I mentioned, that reiterated that claim. I would note that there are portions of the letter, like previous letters, that are form, matters of form, but it also inconsistently represents that the city's not submitted the draft housing element to HCD, and then in turn indicates that, in fact, that was accomplished, as indicated in the staff report, after your council's review on October 18th, on November 14th, 2022. It's our belief that these are procedural aspects of the statute, that the important part of the statute is that of substance, meaning the demonstration of meeting the affordable housing units, both in terms of number count, classifications, after a thorough and conscientious public outreach program, which has been detailed, both in the staff report, that's been available for public review, previously at the Planning Commission, and as advanced tonight by Mr. Cooper. So there is a threat of litigation in this communication. We believe that the Planning Commission can act on the matter, as they have previously, and after the Planning Commission has acted, I believe myself and the city manager would recommend then, that the city council go into a short, closed session, to discuss the matter further.
After we conclude our business here, we can.
Are you suggesting that we don't adopt, make a motion to adopt the housing element, before we close this meeting?
I think that the recommendation would be to allow the Planning Commission to proceed to consider adoption, because it would be their concurrent or previous recommendation on the housing element that would, on which you base your resolution. That's why it's, you know, spaced sequentially in the agenda. So I believe there's sufficient evidence for the Planning Commission to concede, and then after that, I would recommend that we recess to closed session. I believe we can reconvene then in an open session after that closed session, to further discuss aspects raised in this communication.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further from the council this time?
Planning Commissioners.
Planning Commissioners? Yeah. And I think what we'll do is, during this meeting, I think it's a process we should follow and convene in closed session.
No, but.
He wants the Planning Commission.
Let the Planning Commission deliberate, and if they can proceed and reach a decision, then after they reach the decision, then we can have a decision about closed session for the council.
Thank you. Okay, Planning Commissioners.
All right, well, I will make a motion, that the Planning Commission, that we adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the city council, the City of American Canyon, California, adopt a general plan amendment, sixth-cycle housing element update, pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65588, file number PL23-0001, Planning Commission Resolution Number 2003, 2023, rather, next in order.
I second. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Lari.
Aye. All right, we have the second recommendation here. Do I have any motion from the Planning Commission?
I think you've satisfied that obligation.
I think we, we just done that one, right?
Okay.
It would be the recommendation now, as I described earlier, that the council adjourn briefly to closed session.
Do we need a motion to that effect, or can we just?
We can just adjourn.
We can just adjourn. We can plan it back in about 20 minutes.
We will now adjourn briefly for a closed session discussion.
Oh, and city attorney, see, I have a quick question, city attorney, does this mean that the Planning Commission could adjourn its meeting?
That's correct. I'm sorry. Mr. Cooper's correct. The Planning Commission meeting can be adjourned.
It can adjourn.
Thank you for your service this evening. Make, make it back to your dinner, or whatever you want.
Thank you all, Commissioners.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're ready.
Are we live now?
We are live.
Okay, thank you. Council has returned from closed session. Mr. Ross, report out.
There is no report out. The purpose was to confer, based on a threat of litigation, under the provisions of Government Code, Section 569, 56.9D2. And there is no reportable action. You're back in session, as properly agendized for a special meeting, in consideration of the matter of the sixth-cycle housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We all can proceed from here. So, council, we do have a matter of, if there's any, no further questions regarding this discussion, we have a resolution to.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further discussions, I'll make, I'll make a motion, that we adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, California, adopting a general plan amendment, sixth-cycle housing element update, pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65588, file number PL23-0001.
I'll second. Motion and second, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. With that, we have concluded our work for the evening. Really appreciate everybody's input, and all the very dedication and hard work done to achieve this. I think we have something to be very proud of in American Canyon, and I really appreciate the innovation in the way of planning and thinking that we do things. Thank you all.
Good night, American Canyon.
That would be, that being said?
Mr. Mayor, harkening back to Barry Christian's comment, which isn't relevant to the housing element, was just, you know, a public comment. He's talking about the Airport Land Use Commission is having a hearing or a business item tomorrow morning, on their, updating their plan. And my quick purview of their agenda, it sounds like they're just essentially initiating the process.
Although we have an agenda to this topic, Brent, you want to just give a quick update on where you'll be tomorrow afternoon?
The morning, I think.
Well, mayor and councilmembers, I'm, was given the opportunity by the county to join their team of staff, working on the Napa Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Update. So I'll be there, the county tomorrow at 9:00, and then there's a second meeting in the afternoon.
Very good.
So I'll be able to give you updates.
Okay.
I was also part of the consultant selection team, so.
Well, very good, thank you. Thank you for looking out for the entrance of American Canyon.
This is not a, this is not a final adoption of a new plan, this is the beginning of.
Beginning of a process.
The beginning of a process.
Right.
A process that will probably take longer than the housing element.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify for Barry's benefit, that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, tomorrow is not the last opportunity, it's more or less the first one.
It's the beginning.
And the city, city staff is many engaged on this process, from the very beginning, with the county as part of our.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Barry Christian about a week or so ago, where you mentioned this, activity going on. All right, well, that's germane to another conversation, I think, down the road. We have concluded our work for the evening. Thank you all, council. We are adjourned.
Good night, American Canyon.